... with childhood, special education, instructional assistance. Danielle's start date would be January nineteenth, Rachel's would be tomorrow. Under resignations, Josh Dean is middle school football coach pending suitable replacement. And then under your communications, there would be a mid-American energy incentive document of ninety thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars for your information.
Is there a motion to approve as corrected?
I move to approve as corrected.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as corrected or amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item three is to welcome the visitors and allow for public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. We thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments by members of the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, comments by board members and superintendent, and we'll start with Dr. Cox.
Thanks. I've got six items tonight, so bear with me. I was in Des Moines on last Monday at the invitation of Governor Branstad. I met one-on-one with him and Lieutenant Governor Reynolds, and we talked about the governor's proposal to extend the one cent sales tax for an additional twenty years while taking thirty-seven and a half percent of that revenue to address water quality issues. So the School Board Association, the School Administrators Association, Teachers Association, all support extension of that one cent sales tax, as do we. It's one of the things that we had supported, but all of those groups oppose any diversion of the money from its intended purpose of school infrastructure. So that was a good experience. Tomorrow, in the state of the state, we are all anxiously awaiting Governor Branstad's proposal and certainly hopeful that he will put forward a recommended supplemental state aid proposal of two point four five percent for fiscal year seventeen. And SSA amount of two percent or higher would mean fewer dollars that we have to reduce in the coming school year. This morning, Terry and I had another meeting with our insurance representative. We've had a high claimed year this year since July, and Wellmark is recommending that we raise our rates by twenty point six percent for twenty sixteen seventeen. Since we are self-funded, we have some flexibility with that. We are planning to host an informational meeting with employees on February the third in the middle school cafeteria, and insurance is one of the items that are subject to the collective bargaining process. This is our first year with the one thousand eighty hour calendar instead of the one hundred eighty day calendar, and I frequently get asked about making up the lost hours. We had two-hour late start for fog on Friday. We've missed four hours for heat, an hour and a half because of a snow ice condition. Under the traditional calendar, students must be in school for one hundred eighty days, and each school day has to be six hours in length. And there's no option to dismiss early if you have an athletic team competing at a state tournament, for example, volleyball. We would not be able to get out early to go to that and count it as a school day. Late starts and early dismissals for weather are permitted. Under an hours calendar, students must receive at least one thousand eighty hours of instruction. There is, and that equals one hundred eighty days times six hours a day. There's no minimum, and there is no maximum length of the school day. So it can be as short or as long as you want, and it can be as many days as you want. The only thing that matters is, did you achieve one thousand eighty hours? So with the switch to hours, we've been able to invest more time in professional learning of our staff while still meeting the required hours for students. So our calendar this year has one thousand one hundred eighteen hours, and we have missed seven and a half hours. If we were to miss a whole day of school, then we would utilize one of the upcoming professional learning days as a makeup day, and then teachers would make up their missed day professional learning at the end of the school year because they've got one hundred eighty-seven contract days, and they still have to have those included. So there's a kind of a summary of how the days versus hours works. I want to let you know that on Sunday, January the thirty-first, at two PM at the Charles Theater, we are hosting a screening of the film Most Likely to Succeed. And the goal of the movie is to give the audience an understanding of the urgency for moving forward with school reform. It's an inspiring story about a specific school. There's no charge, and we would love to have a great turnout. So again, Sunday afternoon, two o'clock, January thirty-first, Charles Theater. Finally, we are taking our board meetings on the road. So in two weeks, we will be at the Floyd Community Center for our regular board meeting, and on February the twenty-second, we will be up in Cowell, at the Cowell Community Center. So I want to make sure that the public knows those two changes of location.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any board members have comments this evening?
Just a congratulations to you on your private meeting with the governor and lieutenant governor. That's a, that's a big deal, and that's quite an honor to be able to have a one-on-one with him and influence him, as well as hear his thoughts, too. And I just wanted to let you know that January thirty-first is part of Cabin Fever Weekend. I'll promote your event under Cabin Fever Weekend.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item five, which is the public hearing for the high school cafeteria roof. So this would be the time and place when anyone could make comments. We'll double-check with Board Secretary O'Brien. This was published in the newspapers required by law.
Yes.
Have you received any written comments?
No.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience have any written comments to present, or would they like to make oral comments on the high school cafeteria roof project, which is up later in the agenda? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Next up, we have agenda item six, which is the Exploring Science Careers class presentation. A number of students from Mrs. Forsyte's class are here to give us some information about what they're working on, so we'll turn it over to them.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, Exploring Science Career students, to be able to present to you. My name is Brooke McCann. I'm a senior, and I'd like to tell you that one of my favorite things about doing this class is being able to go on the field trips. We took a field trip to Brimwood and got to see how the facility is run, and we got to go to the Waverly Hospital, and we got to see many things and learn many things of how they run the hospital there.
Hello, my name is Melanie Plagenkohl, and I'm here to talk to you about the shadowings we get to do. And as you see on these boards right here, we've all shadowed what we have on the boards and what we made our presentations about. Mine personally was a surgical nurse that I shadowed, and that is what I plan to do next year when I go to college. And there's also many things other than what's on these boards that you can do for shadowings. You can go to Zoetis, Cambridge's, you can go to Brimwood, that Brooke also mentioned, occupational therapy, anything within a hospital, and anything else you really want to do. Donna really helps us out with that, so anything you'd want to get into, she would really help you out with that.
My name is Mackenzie Thomas, and I'm a junior. And my favorite part is going to Cedar Health, which we do once a week. One is during school, and the other is on our own. And you meet with one person, and you talk with them for about a half an hour. And I really enjoy that because it makes their day, because they don't get out and get to do a lot during the day. So, and you get to know them and have this bond with them, and I honestly want to continue it outside of the class.
My name's Addison Davis, and I'm a junior. My favorite thing about the class is meeting new people out in the community and getting to explore new careers that I've never even heard about. We'd also like to personally each give a little explanation about what our board is. Mine was comparing veterinary technicians to veterinarians. The job outlook for a veterinary technician is a thirty percent growth right now, so it's much higher than the average. And the hourly wage is a little bit less, but it's less schooling, which I was excited about. So I think one day I would like to be a vet tech, and how I got into that is, I've always lived on a farm, and I, we've had to deal with sick animals, and sometimes you can't save them all, so it'd be nice I could know how to next, if I ever decided to grow up on a farm, might show up on a farm.
As I said before, mine's for a surgical nurse, and through the shadowing, I've understood like what they do on a daily basis, the different surgeries that they do inside of the Chelsity Hospital compared to larger hospitals, which are mostly in patients and everything like that. There are different like rankings that you can go up for nursing. You can all get all the way to a doctorate in nursing, which is really cool. And like I said before, I'm going to Kirkwood for that, and then I'll probably transfer to Allen to get my BSN in nursing.
I did mine over being an occupational therapy assistant, and going into this class, I didn't have any idea what I wanted to do. So when we went into her at the hospital in town, we got to go into that room, and she talked a little bit about what she did, and it kind of interested me because I want to go into a field that works with people, because I love working with people. So I decided I'd give it a shot, go shadow and see how I liked it, and I fell in love with it. And they work from, with people from all ages, so if a kid is autistic and isn't, doesn't know how to do some of the skills that a normal kid that age would do, they work with them. So putting a puzzle together, just common things like that, getting the motor skills up, or an adult that had a stroke doesn't know how to eat or doesn't know how to do an activity that they really love, they'll help them be able to do that again. And the schooling for an assistant is two to two and a half years. So I like that, too, because being a therapist, you have to go and get your doctorate.
I actually want to be a physical therapist and open my own clinic in town. It's eight years of schooling, and it's a lot, but I'm actually pretty motivated, so I like helping people out, as they said. I like working with people. I actually became interested my seventh grade year when I went to physical therapy myself, in eighth grade, and I'm still going, so that's, I like the impact they have on me, and I want to have that impact as much.
Does anyone have any questions?
What school? You said you were looking at Kirkwood with school.
I'm also going to Kirkwood.
I'm going, I go to Niantic my first two years, and then transfer to Iowa.
I'm looking at Hawkeye.
With the cost of college these days, taking opportunities like this to investigate the stuff before you go to it is priceless, so I commend you guys for taking that opportunity, and I hope more of our students really look into this kind of stuff. I did it when I was in school, and it really was a good, a good, you know, opportunity to see that, experience it. If you don't like it, hey, you're not going to go to a year of wherever, you're going to go to school and spend tens of thousands of dollars to realize that you didn't like it. You might open your eyes while you're still not having to pay for it, so great work.
Very good.
When did you have your presentations that you did to the public back in November?
We were in Des Moines.
Was that when we were in Des Moines?
We were unable to attend, that's why we, we thank you for letting us come here and speak today.
They contacted me last week and asked if they could come and do this a little bit since none of us were able to go up and visit with them in November. So thank you very much for being here and giving us your insight into the work you've done.
Yeah, I'm glad that we had the opportunity, Scott and Donna, because it's always interesting to come and see what everybody's interested in and what you've learned, and, and like Jason had said, it's nice to know and practice and shadow someone to know what you do want to do. It's also nice to know that if you decide that you don't want to do something that you've chosen to, and rather than waste your time. So it all sounds like very bright futures and exciting careers for you. Good luck.
Thank you.
How many students in the class?
Eighteen.
Thank you. Good luck in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to agenda item seven, which is the FFA building plans that we have in our packet. We have some fair society people present, going to make a presentation or a conversation about it. Yeah, get Chuck up there with you. Draw straws.
I'm Amy Stout and Chuck Stout, and we've got steering committee people and our architect here to answer any questions you may have on the building or the paperwork you received for it. So as at present time, we are ready to move forward and start sending out bid packets, and we're working with Terry to make sure all of our agreements are met and we're on the right course for that, so.
Projected start date?
Projected start date, we're told, can be as early as the thaw freezes. So hopefully March, April. It will, our goal is to have it a functional exhibit hall for fair time with rentals completed and finished for two thousand seventeen.
And what was the total capacity and final product for rental?
It'll be, we have ten thousand square feet. Be ten thousand square feet, should seat four hundred people in it, lecture style. I think it was six hundred and fifty.
Great.
That's great.
Awesome.
Very good.
Any other questions from board members?
Packet was very.
Very helpful.
Very thorough.
Detailed information from your architect was great, so we thank you for that.
Did a good job of answering questions in it.
If there's no questions, do we have a motion? We do have a recommendation from administration in the packet, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan and specifications for the FFA building as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for the FFA building as presented. Any questions or comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. You can proceed.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight is the joint facilities discussion. This is an information discussion from board members May Cumber, Walker, and Dr. Cox. So who's taking the lead?
We had a meeting on Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday the.
Someday last week.
Yeah, last Tuesday.
Beginning of the week.
With representatives from the TLC board and from the YMCA. Had a good discussion, probably forty minutes or so.
It was probably fifteen or sixteen of us present.
And the general consensus was that there is a desire to move forward with a concept for Y presence at the high school site, and with continuing to explore the conversion of the existing YMCA facility into a early childhood type programming location, wise guys before and after school, TLC programming there, and indoor playground, that type of thing.
We left, and it was essentially left in the Y's court. They have some more, really they're the ones that need to do the investigation of what, if the feasibility on their end, you know, what, what they want, need, could have, whatever it may be. So they're going to continue that process. They've got some national YMCA folks to contact that will help them through that process, so they're going to get that started and hopefully make some progress. I think we're all under the understanding to have a much clearer picture of this direction by summer, this coming summer, so that provided a little bit of a timeline, but, you know, the way we left it was that until we kind of have an idea on what they are considering or would consider, you know, that we have no idea on how to proceed with our site plan at the current high school site. So once they are able to work that up and provide us with some sort of idea, then we can really move forward with our site plan development in the future, too.
And they put together, they, basically there was a verbal list of to-do lists that the Y had put together that they were going to, to look at, take care of, and come back to us with answers.
Yeah, really, I don't think, we were left with much.
No.
We were kind of in a holding pattern for most parts, so.
TLC talked about looking at some cash flow things, and that with them there. That morning that we met, they had turned down a family with three children because of lack of room in the current facility, so they are feeling the need for expansion to offer services to greater population.
Wow, that is great news. I mean, that's, to see all of those things, you know, like a domino effect take place would be such a great thing for the community and would be a help to us as well. So, gosh, great job for.
It was a very upbeat meeting, too. It was just lots of positive, positives.
Informal conversation.
From every, every aspect, every avenue, every organization that was involved there was all very much positive.
Now, when the Y is talking about their, their interest, did they indicate at all, I mean, we saw a couple of different versions from the FEH study.
Now, they were really still at ground zero with what, you know, what it would be, how much of their services would still be provided in the old building because they would still own that, what, what they would offer there, you know, how that would dictate the kind of space they would need at the new site, you know, costs, what, you know, kind of figures it would cost to do different things. So really, they were still at kind of ground zero with internally developing some stuff. And apparently their national organization could come in and say, for a community your size, these are the kinds of things that, you know, you could, you could offer, so they, I, you know, I think fairly ambitiously will be working on coming up with that, that kind of stuff, so. They didn't point to anything in the book from FEH and say, you know, this or that, so.
So hopefully by this June or July, then, we should have more information from them. Is that what I'm hearing?
We would hope for sooner than later, but.
So that we can proceed with our long-range goals and plans as well.
Well, I'm curious if we were to do some type of a shared facility or, or something with the Y. I'm not sure how does this work out. Are we selling? Would we be selling, or would we be leasing?
Probably all to be determined in the future.
Yeah, very much so.
I mean, it's.
And they had a num, they had a number of examples of other communities around the state and around the Midwest that are currently functioning in this capacity, and apparently the, their national organization also can give them direction on people traffic, security, different things like that, where shared spaces especially. Then they also had other districts and Y's that, you know, worked together on programming, you know, who gets to use the gym at this time, who gets to use the whatever at this time type of thing, so those shared spaces, that stuff will be all for more conversation, so.
But there was, you know, there was, a good point was taken by, while we sat there at the Y, like they indicated there was nobody in their gym at that time whatsoever, when during school hours, we would have individuals in our gym, so there sits a gym that's being heated with no one utilizing that space. So at a time when we do need to better use spaces by more people, I think we've yet again moving in a direction that needs to be.
So, and all of this kind of comes together from the FEH study and the conversations we had in the community last summer in July and August. So we, you know, five, six months later, we continue to move forward as a community, working together with those other organizations. We'll probably just sit back and wait for them to do their homework and see where they're at with their funding and their needs, and then we'll hear from them this summer or before and be able to continue working together for the future of everyone.
I guess the other piece of information, too, I wanted to mention was, they even talked about it being, how did they word it, as far as it's not going to be phase two, it's like a phase one.
One A.
One A. So it actually won't become part of any of our phases, it would be its own phase, so that it could have its own timeline, so that one wouldn't hold the other back one way or another. They were more concerned about how long it would take us to get our stuff going, and so, yeah, it was interesting.
As long as we're all working together for the future, wow, call it whatever phase you want, and let's keep moving forward, right?
But I like, I like that comment in that it's not going to hinge on what.
On our future plans for the district. So that's good.
That's good.
We're certainly going to have to coincide somehow.
Yep.
In the bigger picture, but the, the good part of it was they can be independent of one another after the big picture is sorted out.
Very good. Thank you for attending that meeting. I know that being on committees takes extra time, especially during the day, but that sounds like it was a meeting well worth going to, to share information with those other organizations. Anything else from that meeting? Anybody want to say anything about? We'll move on to agenda item nine, acquisition and redevelopment of Five Hundred North Grand.
So Charlie Thompson has provided more than a hundred pages worth of documents to us for review, and we've sent those off to the attorney to look them over. It's four separate documents. There is an option agreement, there is a purchase and development agreement, lease for the eastern portion of Five Hundred North Grand, and then a condominium declaration to split this eastern portion from the, excuse me, the eastern portion, the nineteen seventy addition from the western portion, the nineteen thirty-two building. So Allers Law Firm, we've had a, an attorney, Connor Wasson, who has been looking over this, has given an initial look, but obviously we want him to have some time to, to go through. And again, I think it's a hundred twelve pages total, so want to have an opportunity for him to review that, and really Charlie just wanted this out as, you know, more information as to his intent with the acquisition of the Five Hundred North Grand property. And so if there are some questions that I can answer, I will. Otherwise, I would expect more information in two weeks at, at our meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Well, and again, it's good to know that things are moving forward along various fronts with the district and the community, so having this document, it is posted, is it posted?
It's on our website.
It's on tab for exhibits for tonight.
Under the exhibits, you just click on it and get just his information without having to sort through the other exhibits that we have posted.
The other several hundred pages we had for the evening, so. Where, I think this is great, again, that we continue to move forward on various fronts, and the potential sale of this building obviously continues to move forward with over a hundred-page document that is now in the hands of the lawyers, so whenever that's ready, I'm sure we'll have this as an agenda item again.
Very good.
So we'll move on to agenda item ten, which is media coverage presentation by Communications and Community Engagement, Justin DeBord. and Community Engagement, Justin DeBoer.
Good evening. We're going to talk about the immediate impact that we have. We're going to talk about the media impact that we've had from the beginning of the school year through the end of the calendar year. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to, to speak with you tonight. This position, the Communications and Community Engagement position was created in 2014. And what it allows us to do is really tell our story. And we have an incredibly important story to tell with 1,500 very important characters, which is our, which are our students. Also, what, what we've been able to do is kind of demystify a little bit about what happens behind our walls because some people just don't understand or know what happens. Let's talk about the position briefly. The position is really three hats. The first one is communications for the Charles City Community School District. The second is the Public Access Network Video Director for the City of Charles City. And third is the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, which most people know as Obamacare, a record keeper for the Charles City Community School District. What you need to know and what's important here is that the city pays more than 71% of this job through non-taxpayer dollars. So frankly, I'm a real bargain for you. What we will be focusing on tonight is one element of one of the communication duties, which is media relations and earned media. So you might be asking, what is earned media? We tell our story to everyone. We tell our story to parents, students, teachers, and the community. But one of the other things that we do is we tell our story to people who own really big microphones and who buy ink by the barrel. In essence, earned media is the news coverage that the Charles City Community School District works to secure. These media then tell our story to their viewers and their readers, which amplifies our story. Earned media is the most trusted, most credible form of information, conveyance to our stakeholders, with a whopping 92% of people who trust earned media. Then what we do is we amplify it back by reposting our district, on our district's social media channels, Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, and the such. So if somebody missed the Saturday Globe Gazette article about Lily Usher and Sophie Nettleton making connections with world famous scientist Robert Ballard and an oceanographer and Jack, John, Jack Horner, a, one of the world's top paleontologists, then we connect them with that story. And that's a story that happened here this weekend. So let's talk about September. September, we had 80 stories through our various media sources, 80 stories. The top election, the top stories were the election, the nut policy, the construction update, which we are doing every single month, the respect retreat, fencing, project-based learning. The sod house was a major story for, for our school district, combating bullying. The Floyd County Sheriff's Department hopped on a bus and did a review of anyone who was driving past. And so that was something that we contributed to. And national merit scholars and academic awards because those are important. They sometimes don't get the coverage that they deserve. 80 stories. 77.5% of the stories in September were positive or neutral. If you take out anything to do with the election, that number skyrockets to 98.5% positive or neutral. Let's talk October. October, we had the butterfly release. And that may seem like a small thing, but that is a big thing to parents. And just to see, this is what's happening, this is what's happening in, in our schools, at Washington, at Lincoln, at the middle school and at the high school. This is a big thing. Construction update once again, homecoming, tree planting, firefighters teaching kindergarteners what to do, not to be scared of them during a fire. The marching band always takes center stage in fall. And then the STEM best. And the Graciela Wiking from Buenos Aires visited Charles City. That was several stories. But then we come to the STEM best. STEM best was something that we had about a week to prepare for. And so what we did was we created our own video that was released at, a midnight release. And so shortly after midnight, we started to put videos out to news media. We started to put this on our YouTube channel and all of our Facebook channels and social media. And so from midnight on, this was, this was the story. And so just that story was picked up by the Charles City Press, KCHA News, KIMT-TV3, KAA-L News, Mason City Globe Gazette, and Iowa Public Radio statewide, KCRG-TV9, Cedar Rapids, and the Associated Press. This is Paul Gibbons. He, in an email, said, "Great job. I know that we had the most widespread and impactful STEM best story in the region." And he was extremely complimentary. So we move on to November and it was Red Ribbon Week. It was students supporting veterans. It was Comet Cafe getting up and going. And success, we, we did a whole coordinated media effort for American Education Week, which is the second year that we've done that as well. It's an opportunity for us to tell our story with, under the theme of American Education Week. Forty-nine stories in November, 100% of the, of the coverage in the area media about Charles City Community School District was absolutely positive or neutral. December came around, students using pedometers, students cooking, a thank you up for the Charles City Middle School Construction Crew, students saving pennies, pennies for charity so that they can turn around and donate that to families who need Christmas meals. Fifty-two stories in December, 96.1 positive or neutral. So when we add everything up here, we've had 272, 272 stories in the media from the beginning of the school year to the end of the calendar year. 90% of them were positive or neutral. Once again, if you take the election out of the situation, out of the equation, 96.3% were positive or neutral. So these are our media partners. These are the people who regularly visit us. We've invested time and effort into building these relationships. When they come to Charles City or when they come and cover a story, they like coming here because they know they're going to leave with a legitimate story and they know they are going to leave with a good story. These are the media sources. Our students, community, parents, and stakeholders read, watch, and listen to on a daily basis. But we also know how to build new relationships and for, you know, our current and future projects. When we visited Des Moines, we coordinated with the Iowa Association of School Boards to make sure that we weren't going to step on anyone's toes when we picked up the phone and we called media. They said, "Hey, we've sent out a press release three weeks ago. We've got this taken care of. But frankly, if you want to go ahead and do this, good luck. You're not going to get anyone. You're wasting your time." Sixty minutes later, I talked to the Iowa Association of School Boards press person when KCCI showed up, just to say, "Hey, they're here." And then 30 minutes later, WHO once again showed up and we contacted them just to make sure that they were aware. We know what to do to tell our story. And it's beneficial to everyone that's involved inside and outside of the Charles City Community School District. Now, I know that you are keeping track of us as well because the Iowa Association of School Boards sends out a periodic email. And you are, I'm hearing back from most of you saying, "Yes, I'm seeing Charles City now" in the statewide email that goes out. And so we've, we've had that happen more than ever before as well. KCHA, I want to, I want to point out that we do a weekly podcast and an Every Other Week Conversation on KCHA on Thursday mornings. The podcast runs on Wednesdays. The Every Other Week Conversation runs on Thursdays. Other government organizations have taken our cue, have taken our lead, and have started a once-a-month conversation as well. So people are seeing that this is important and communication is a key to, to getting things done. What we have built is, is really the new, the new normal. And we are stronger for it. Parents expect coverage, teachers are expecting coverage, and the media is expecting us to reach out to them and, and give them tips. And so we are stronger for this. Home-to-school connections are fostered as well because it's important to reach out and communicate with parents and the community. Here's why and how we do it. We reach out to as many people as possible. We use as many media as we can without being dependent on a single source. We give our audience what they want. We give them stories and we give them people an inside look of what's happening in the school district. We are leveraging what our audience is also wanting by putting that out on social media. And we make communications digestible. This is important. You know from sitting at this table that you have a lot of acronyms thrown at you. And if we just start throwing out acronyms to everyone in the community, then they aren't going to understand. We make communication from the school district digestible. And we're doing all of this and we're stronger for doing it. We educate, we inform, and we tell the story of what's happening. And this is important. It is important to say that we are doing this when we are not asking anything from our voters. We are not having, we do not have a bond issue right now. There is nothing that we are doing specifically to gain something. We are doing this because it is the right thing to do to keep our community informed. To touch on social media, our main goal with social media is to use things that we, are, the outlets that we can actually convey a message with. Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube are our main sources. We stick with outlets where we can convey a message and not just a picture. And so this is where we have found that our community is at and that we want to be where they are. High school choir on tour at Christmas, 1,300 people reached. Your Iowa Association of School Boards Award of Achievement, 1,500 people reached. Madison Lockley wanted help finding someone from Croatia. We helped. 1,800 people reached and she found her, her source. Nearly 10,000 people visited and viewed the STEM best video. 10,000 people viewed that STEM best video just on the Charles City Facebook page alone. That's it. That's all. Now add Osage, Red Rockford, Marble Rock, and New Hampton to that because they all use the same video on their social media pages as well. Seventh graders, first in the State of Iowa Track and Field Coaches Association State Cross Country Meet, 1,800 people reached. The middle school honor roll, 2,400 people reached. We only have 600 to 700 people on the middle school Facebook page. And we reached 2,400 people with the middle school honor roll. Twitter, for, for, for folks who don't like Twitter, I have to share these numbers. September...
Who doesn't like Twitter?
I don't know. I don't know. But, I mean, and I'll say this. Facebook is predominantly the, the main source that people in Charles City use. Twitter, 45,000 impressions in September, 79,000 impressions in October, 46,000 impressions in November, and 39,000 impressions in December. Twitter is a major source of, of information conveyance. And it is one of the first things that we have learned for crisis communication is people will go to Twitter. Briefly, on the website, because that is also an important goal that this board and, and administration has said that we wanted to redo, we've had nearly, from November 1st to December 31st, we've had nearly double the number of website sessions compared to one year ago at the exact same time. The number of pages viewed on the website has climbed from 95,600 to 138,700 for an increase of 43,100 more pages viewed on our website compared to the exact same time one year ago, those two months, November and December. We've had a 6% increase in new people, new people visiting the website compared to one year ago. In conclusion, we are telling the story of greatness in the Charles City Community School District. Greatness in students, greatness in teachers, and greatness in everybody who is working here and getting an education here. We are gaining even more public confidence in what's happening inside of these walls. This program that we have developed is important to the parents, to the community, to the school, and to our mission, and to the future goals that we want to accomplish as a school district. We have a tremendous amount of success with this program. We are the envy of other school districts. Stop me after the meeting. I'd be happy to tell you a couple of stories there. You are able to afford this at an extremely minimal cost to the Charles City Community School District because of the partnership with the City of Charles City, which funds more than 71% of this investment. In conclusion, this is a recap of one element of one of the hats that we wear. And I absolutely love what I do. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. DeBoer or comments?
I couldn't type it as fast as you were talking. So question would be, you know, if we put this up on the website for folks to look at afterward, can you include some of those numbers that you were talking about?
Sure.
Twitter impressions, 40,000 to 70,000. I roughed them each month in the fall.
Sure.
Is that just off the CC comments?
This is at, this is at the @CC underscore comments Twitter account. So 45,000 in September, 79.8 in October, 46 in November, 46,000, these are thousands, and 39,000 impressions in December. And that is just from the CC underscore comments Twitter account.
And so if you could track in administrative team?
Exactly.
Now we're talking six figures worth of impressions.
Right. And all of, I mean, we have many teachers who have Twitter accounts. We have board members who have Twitter accounts. We have administrators who have Twitter accounts. And so that is just one account of, of them. And we also have sports teams and activities that also maintain Twitter accounts as well.
You mentioned the 10,000 views on the STEM best video.
Yes.
Any other big hitting videos from the fall?
That was, that was our, our most impactful. We also, I mean, I go back...
We had a couple last year.
We did. We did. But I also say, I mean, even things like being able to record the high school talent show is important to parents. And being able to put, through the Charles City Public Access Network, we recorded every single concert this winter. And we broadcasted on the channel and we made it available on YouTube and the Charles City Public Access Network as well. So it is, we, we do, we do a lot of videos. And what I want to say is stay tuned because we have some more coming out as well.
So with all those videos being recorded from those different events, especially the concerts and whatnot, grandparents and family relatives who don't live in Charles City or the immediate area, or who happen to be working or busy on the evenings of those events, still have an opportunity to watch the children do their performance.
Correct. In fact, I will go back to a story of the school board. You had a meeting at the beginning of one of the concerts. You can go back and you can watch that because of, because of the efforts that, that we had. And so, I mean, and there are other things that we've, we've tried, we've dabbled in, Periscope, we've...
I was going to say, the night we were in Des Moines and you were periscoping the concert in the auditorium and three of us were sitting in a restaurant watching you...
Watching the concert?
Watching the concert on Periscope.
You bet. Peris, we've, we've done that twice now. And the thing is, is that in order to do this and in order to stay fresh, we, we're still experimenting with some, with the new, the new things, with the new social media. If we find something that will convey our message and tell our story to our community, then we will make sure and, and start using that on a more regular basis.
Well, I can say, you've been, you've done such a great job, Justin, with all of these stories. I mean, and this is just this year. We're, you know, you did so much last year. All of this good news and, and championing all of the administrators, the teachers, the students especially. Gosh, that, that's just wonderful to tune into KIMT or open up the Globe Gazette. Or I'm continually getting Google alerts about Charles City School District is in the news again. And, and it's great to see because we do have so many great things going on. And, and good to push it out there because why not? Why shouldn't we tell how good everybody's doing? Of course, we'd like to have more students come here and join us. So...
One, as a graduate of Charles City School, most of my Facebook friends are classmates from a number of years ago. And when you post events and news on the school Facebook pages, I share them on my page. And you're reaching out to people with ties from the community. And there's where we're getting, in my opinion, these huge numbers of viewers because it's not just people who live here. It's, I know somebody who knows somebody who lived there. And we start sharing that information via social media. And now we're reaching the entire country.
One of the, one of the excellent examples of that was last year when we did the Pledge of Allegiance video. And we had multiple, we had multiple... of Allegiance video. And we had multiple, we had multiple audience, we had multiple audiences that we wanted to reach, and we had multiple messages in there. And one of the things that we wanted to do was, okay, so nationwide, some schools are dropping the Pledge of Allegiance and, and for whatever reason. Here in Charles City, here in America's hometown, we do say it. We say it in, in every school that we did the video for. And so we wanted to make sure that, and it was, it was timed appropriately. It was timed for Veterans Day, but we did that on purpose. We, we actually really do think through the timing on a lot of things.
You bet.
So.
I've reposted that video several times because that still floats around on Facebook. I see it often-
Yep.
About protesting, not saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll post it and say what we do here in Charles City.
Yes, we do.
I also want to make a note that there's a lot of alumni, there's a lot of young families that the only way you're going to connect with them is through social media. They do not buy a subscription to the Charles City Press. We also have a lot of young families who have left the area, not necessarily young families, young people who have left the area who still keep tabs on what happens in Charles City. They're going to be finishing college and getting their jobs and deciding where they want to put roots up. And if they're, you can keep them excited about what's going on here, they'll come back and raise their families here. Because I've heard that already from, from a couple of the kids, that it's like, we're going to get back there. We want to come back and raise our kids there now too. What you guys are doing with the schools is awesome. That's what we want for our soon-to-be children.
We have, and I will say, we do have several audiences that we try to reach. Alumni, current parents, former students, community members. And so we've done our, we've also done some, some research that backs up where we go. And you're exactly right. There are people who don't subscribe. But I will say that our number one communication stream that our community says that they get the most amount of news from is the Charles City Press. And so, you know, it's, it's a good partnership. And, and we have to realize that, yes, some people do, no, some people don't. And so I go back to, we want to tell our story to as many people. And when we, when we tell it to people who have open websites, then we can repost that. The nice thing also is that the Charles City Press has granted us the ability to take any article that they have written about the school district, and after one week, we can post that on our website. And so we, you know, that, that also helps. And we're very happy with that relationship and look forward to continuing the relationship with all of our media sources.
Very good. Anything else for Justin?
I think the, the strength of that, not only his background at Channel 7 in Waterloo, but just the people that he was connected to so that we do have relationships with all of these media outlets. There are probably seven or eight, I've lost track of the number of reporters who have come from KIMT alone just to visit with me over the two and a half years that I've been here. The relationships that we've been able to establish up in Minnesota, KAL, Channel 9 out of Cedar Rapids, driving nearly two hours to come up to our STEM Best event. I thought that was huge.
Yep.
They at least keep us on their weather radar on Channel 9. But still, we're on the fringe, and I didn't expect them to come, yet here they were. The people in Des Moines who will pick up the phone when he calls, like you said, Channel 8, Channel 13. The network is just very big. And he hasn't referenced the weekly tip sheets that he puts out to really let media know, hey, here are the things, the great things going on in Charles City. Well, if we're doing that and nobody else is, here's a great way for media outlets to at least have a source of good stories. And we've got a lot of great stories. I didn't, I couldn't count as fast as you were talking either, each month, but it's a lot going on. So I appreciate all that he has done. Again, one-third of his job, Public Access Network and Obamacare and this, but it's, it's been a blessing.
Thank you very much so.
Thank you, Justin.
Keep it up.
Agenda item 11 is the China Partnership Memorandum of Us Understanding.
So we got the, we also sent this to our attorneys to have them review it. And it came back with quite a few things that the attorney suggested. Hey, let's take a look at this and maybe think through what they are proposing and tailor it to meet Charles City's needs a little more specifically. So the agreement is not before you tonight to approve. The goal will be to have that on the 25th as well so that we have time to work through those suggested changes. However, at the last meeting when I did the presentation, you as a board had several questions, so I wanted to at least go through that publicly since you had asked me the questions. Here are the answers that I got back. Will Chinese students choose Charles City, or will they be assigned to Charles City? Tom's answer is that the most likely response is that the company will end up placing students in any of the partner schools. He does hope to have some students here in the spring, you know, visiting Iowa. And if some students were to say, oh, man, we just loved it in Charles City, obviously, they're going to work with them to try to accommodate that. But if there are 20 people who want to be here and we can only take five, you know, the company's going to reserve the right to choose where students go. Would a student go home for the summer or stay for two years? That was one I hadn't thought of. I think Robin might have asked that one. They will go home for the summer. So it's not going to be a 24-month placement. Will students be screened ahead of time? The answer is yes. And they'll meet with them. They will go through interviews over in China. This whole first year spoken English is going to be something that we'll have to work through. And then they will evaluate how much ESL or ELL support that they can provide or what is needed. Another question was, what are the potential costs if a Charles City student wanted to go over to China to attend school for a semester or a year? He's going to have to figure that out. He did share that Chinese students at elite schools would pay 18 to $23,000 a year for high school. Yeah. He thinks that they would be offering scholarships to our students, and that it would be a good thing for their schools to have an American student at their school. So he needs to explore how much would it cost, how much would be covered by scholarship, and he'll get back to us on that. And then the last question, I think was phrased a little bit differently, but I've got it here, is what type of short-term cultural exchanges are possible for community members in general? So for adults and families, they can put together trips-
I just worded it differently.
I think it might have been worded differently in December, but-
Okay.
They can put together something for one week, two weeks, three weeks, whatever the, the community needs or desires are. They're open to ideas. Like if they were to put together, what would you want to see? And so right now, it's just too big of a question. They've got the ability to plan this, and it's going to be a focus for them. But right now, they're trying to nail down all the student parts of the program. And then they'll get to, how do we promote this bigger in the community? And again, we're going to want, as part of this program, to have families hosting the exchange students, much like we do with our foreign exchange students that are here just for one academic year. So opening up more homes, getting people exposed to the idea of Asia versus Europe or South America. It's exciting, but there are still some things to be worked through question-wise. So. Anything I can answer about either the agreement or what we've got here? Otherwise, we'll hope for more information in two weeks.
Looks good.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Resolution Adopting Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Total Cost for the High School Cafeteria Reroofing Project.
So at the December meeting, you had approved the tentative plans and specifications. This is, just to formalize, the, the five options, which were N, O, P, Q, and R. The contract, the estimated total cost of the project, which was $230,000. And there was one addendum made to the original plans. So we'll do this first. Then in the next agenda item, we're actually only going to recommend doing a portion of that whole project that's being presented to you right now.
Okay. And, and this can be done after a public hearing?
Right.
So we're approving the final plans after you've heard any public comment?
And no one came tonight to-
Right.
-give any input. No one provided input in writing, but we have to wait for that until we can do the final.
Motion to approve the final plans and specifications, including Addendum Number One, Form of Contract, and the estimated cost of $230,000 for the High School Cafeteria Reroof Project as proposed.
I'll second that.
Agenda item 12 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any further discussion or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote?
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 13 is to award the bid for the High School Reroofing Project.
So the Buildings and Grounds Committee has met. Jerry met with the architects, and their belief is that doing sections O and P at a cost of $102,000 would take care of the leaks at the High School Cafeteria, and that we wouldn't have to do N, Q, and R. So the recommendation is to spend that 102,000, not the 230, and then to add the remaining budget to the Transportation Center, the bus barn budget, so that we can get that completed.
Yes.
Yeah, we had a great discussion about this at the Buildings and Grounds. I was leery and tentative about just doing sections because I think I had sensed that Jerry was as well at our last meeting and when we talked about doing these sections. But it sounds as though his, he was, all of the contractors that he looked at and provided bids were all confident as well that fixing these sections that are listed would fix the leaks that we have. And they also suggested that the other sections that we had considered fixing have a rough lifespan of another four to five years. So we're not pushing back anything at any, any sort of neglect by any means by holding off. We fix the leaks that are of imminent need, and then also are able to dedicate some more money to the bus barn. So we all felt, felt that it was a good, good way to go.
That's a win-win all the way around. We get to fix that roof, save a little bit of money, push it to the bus barn, get that project done, and buy some more time while we figure out our facilities. It's great.
And Advanced Builders, have they done work for us in the past?
I don't know. They're not, they're not the ones that do most of our work.
Right.
They're out of Cedar Rapids.
Cedar Rapids. And I don't, they weren't set up as a vendor, so.
They had a lot of suggestions, a lot of good input on other areas of our roofs too. They had a different system for ceiling or seams that Jerry was very enthusiastic about. And he was really enjoyed working with them. They had a lot of good advice.
Motion to award a construction contract for the High School Cafeteria Reroof Project as described in the plans and specifications as follows. Contractor Advanced Builders, amount of bid $102,000. Portion of project, bid package number one, including roof sections O and P.
I'll second that.
Do we need the rest? I'm seconding it, please, or not?
There is. And?
And to direct the President and Secretary to execute contract with the contractor for the construction of the public improvements. Such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
I'll second that part also.
Agenda item 13 has been moved and seconded as presented and recommended by administration. Any further comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 14, Financial Report for December of 2015.
Just a couple of-
Go ahead.
Comments. Our food service balance, as you probably noticed in our comparison, is 56.4% less than a year ago. And it has been steadily declining, you know, since the beginning of the year. So I feel like we need to take some steps to reverse the trend because we can't, we can't continue this long term. So we will be looking at some food options and, you know, staffing to see if we can, you know, just maintain even where we're at. You know, it may take several months to reverse it, but Dawn and I are going to be working together on that.
Good.
And then also, our health fund balance is down just 5.5%. And as Dan mentioned, our claims have been higher than normal, higher than what Wellmark was anticipating. So thus, along with Wellmark's trends, what they're seeing in the market for health costs in general, besides just our experience, have been high. And so that's why we're looking at a 20% increase if we were to make no changes. And that's it.
Any other questions about the financial report? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the financial report for December.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for December of 2015. Any further comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 15 is the Audit Report for 2014-15 Fiscal Year.
Do you have a clicker? Or are you going to click? Okay. Yeah, so you have in your packets the 2015 Audit Report, 78 pages long, in a lot of detail. It covers the CAR, basically. So all of the financial information from the CAR is just re-entered into their format. So I won't be going over any of the financial information since we went through that in September. But then, as far as our audit opinion, which is what we hired them to do, we're required to have an audit every year. The opinion that they gave says that the financial statements referred to present fairly and in all material aspects are financial statements. So that is, you know, the highest opinion you can get because they're saying, they're not looking at everything. They're sampling. They didn't find anything material that was wrong, and gave us their, their unqualified opinion. Then the next part of the audit report is our management discussion and analysis. And that's where we can actually have some input into the audit report, where we can, you know, say what the economic factors that are, you know, bearing on us in the future might be. So the economic factors are actually listed on page 17. And as we've presented in previous reports, declining enrollment is a big one. So that was our first one. And then, you know, we're going to be looking at reducing costs by maybe sharing some middle school, high school staff and, and gaining some efficiencies from that. Third, we've been looking at possible joint facility opportunities. And, you know, we had the study in October when, you know, just after the audit was done. It seems like you could take a snapshot any time and have some new information to, to add. But, and then lastly, we issued some more debt, $7.9 million of additional debt. That would be the next one. So those are the four comments that we have on page 17. Then I just kind of went through the index. There's many sections of the report- There's many sections of the report. You know, the financial statements, there's notes to the financial statements, required supplemental information. And then the very last part of the report is the compliance issues. So, in our, on page 77 and 78, we had two comments. Certified enrollment supplemental waiting was understated by 1.381 students. This will be corrected when we do our 2016-17 budget. We actually brought it to them, so we were aware of it, and they had to verify it for the Department of Management. And then lastly, we, in the CAR information I provided, the food service balance was negative. And that was due to the new GAZV 68 and 71 requirements for reporting our portion of the state of Iowa's IFRS funding deficit. You know, hopefully, that would never happen, but it's an accounting requirement that, based on our number of employees, this is what our liability would be. So, it actually took the food service balance, because food service is considered a business-type entity. So, they actually have to account for their employees' IFRS deficit piece. So, their balance went from $217,000 to $89,000, negative $89,000, which is a, a big decrease. But without it, you know, if everything had stayed consistent with prior year, our balance would have been $217,000. And then the governmental activities account is where we have to record the remainder of all our general fund employees. So, that went from $1.6 million positive to $4.5 million negative. And that is it. If you have any questions or comments on the audit report, I'll take them.
Very impressive. A lot of work, obviously. Commended you for that.
Nice job, Terry. We're lucky to have you.
Absolutely. No, no discrepancies, no, nothing to watch out for or potentially change.
No segregation of duties wasn't in the report.
Wow. That's great.
No, no gift cards.
No mileage with incorrect numbers or anything like that this year?
No.
That's impressive.
That is.
Yeah. Motion to approve the 6:30 of 15 Audit Report as presented.
I'll second it.
I think Justin should do a story. Get the press.
Justin should do a story on the audit report coming out, great. It's been moved and seconded to approve the June 30th of 15 Audit Report as presented. Any further discussion? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 16 is a resolution to consider continued participation in the Instructional Support Program. Realized a month ago, three weeks ago, we told you we'd be back in June, but we're back in January instead as the finance committee.
So, we had discussion at our December 14th board meeting, and it was kind of split at that point. And after further reflection, I'm here tonight to recommend that we go ahead and move toward an April 5th election date for our public to consider the, continuing the Instructional Support Levy. And again, it expires in 2017. We'd like to get it taken care of now. And at the same time, we would put the physical plant and equipment levy before them to have that extended as well for an additional 10 years. Again, keeping everything the same. And so, that is the recommendation for you this evening. We'll put Terry in charge of kind of helping us to condense information down into one page, so that we can have that available for stakeholders to, to know what it is that we're asking and, and take care of it this spring instead of waiting.
And help the stakeholders understand what this levy buys, in a sense, what it provides and the schools. I think it would be very informative for them all, so. Very good.
Another great Justin story.
April 5th, is that what you said?
April 5th would be the date.
Yeah.
I like, I like that. I like another opportunity. I mean, you can't get back missed opportunities if there were to be miscommunication to the public or the community on what, what it's for and why it should be approved, so I, I like the date.
You have the resolution in the packet, which calls for a public hearing to be held February 8th at 6:30 here in this building, to continue moving forward with having that election.
You want a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the resolution to consider participation in the Instructional Support Levy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to consider participation in the Instructional Support Levy as presented in your packet. Any further comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 17 is the consideration of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda items as listed and corrected earlier in the meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 18 is Correspondence and Miscellaneous. We have in our packet the Enrollment Summary and the Iowa Association for Educational Purchasing, Food Purchasing Report. And we had also received the Mid-American Energy Information over the weekend via email.
This is a, a spot on the agenda that I had Terry add a month ago or so, a place where we can put communications in so that you can review them, and then we can also share with the public.
Were there any comments or things you wanted to highlight from those correspondence?
The, and the amount of the energy incentive we are receiving, is that not the highest that we were presented with, the possible allowance?
Hmm, not necessarily.
I can't remember.
I think it's close.
It's got to be close.
Yeah, I think.
There were other, there were other packages that, if we were to make other go above and beyond what we're doing, it would, it could, it could have raised it, but that would have come at greater expense to the project, too, but.
I thought it looked like it was, I thought we were figuring on 70 and we're at 90, so it's.
Yeah. It's been, actually, it's been estimated at 90 for quite a while, but they left it at 70 in the budget, so I think that helps.
Very good.
Agenda item 19 is the Important Upcoming Dates. And Dr. Cox, earlier in the meeting, already hit upon the fact that two weeks from tonight, we will meet in Floyd at the Community Center for a meeting at 6:30. Any other items we want to touch upon?
You know, there's a whole host of things. We've got SEIAC on Wednesday here at 5 o'clock in the middle school cafeteria. There is a workshop, Iowa Association of School Boards Workshop on Thursday evening in Waverly. We're hoping to take as many of the board members as we can down to that. 10 more points toward the Better Boardsmanship Award. But more importantly, it's on advocacy as we gear up for the legislative session. Monday, no school. We have Professional Learning Day for our teaching staff. Board meetings coming up in Floyd and Cowell. February 1st, the Iowa Caucuses. January 31st, again, the movie Most Likely to Succeed at the Charles Theater. Parent-teacher conferences also on the 1st, so the next two to three weeks, there's, there's a lot going on. Not even counting all the extracurricular and van and speech type activities as well.
Travel plans for Thursday?
Uh, yeah, we'll have a, a school van to take us.
Okay, what time? You have an idea?
As soon as we log off here, I'll tell you.
Seeing no other business to come before the board, we will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.